Thank you. All right, if you'll join me in roll call, please. Sorry. It was a trick. Aaron.
Here.
Ashley Jones.
Here.
Kim York.
Here.
Paul Kaufman.
Here.
Bill Lowe.
Here.
Billy King.
Here.
Ruth Johnson. Present. Now if you'll join me in standing in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, our mission statement, preparing each student for a successful and meaningful life. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Onto recognitions, Dr. Monses and...
All right, this evening we get to recognize the accomplishments of some of our fine students. And we're going to start with our local district spelling bee winner. And she represents South Middle School, she's an eighth grader, and her name is Audrey Mitchell. Audrey, will you come forward? I like that she brought her own trophy, that's tremendous. And from what I understand, it was one of the longest local spelling bees we've had in a long time. It just went round after round after round, and she came out on top representing the, her building well. And next up for her on March 11th is the Cass County Spelling Bee. And I'm sure she will represent us well there as well. So let's give her another round of applause. All right, next we want to recognize some of our outstanding student athletes. In case you missed it this fall, we had a tremendous football season. And our football team finished as district champs. And I believe Coach Cruz, it's the first time since we moved to the largest class that we were able to accomplish that, which gets you all the way to the state semifinals. And that doesn't happen without some outstanding performances throughout the course of the season. So we want to recognize those young, young men this evening that made All-State. On the first team All-State was wide receiver Luke Grimm. I don't think I saw Luke here. All right. Also first team as punter is Gabe Sappington. You know, this is kind of a transition. I've been here seven years and there's been a Sappington kicking for the team the whole time. So I don't know what's going to happen next. Yeah. Not, he wasn't seven years, don't get me wrong. He was a four-year guy. All right. Stay here, please. Joining him up here are some, second team defensive line, Ethan George. We have second team running back, Gabe Shanklin. And we have second team linebacker, Graham Sutherland. No, no spelling test for them tonight. And I also want to offer a special congratulations to Coach Cruz. He couldn't have ended it on a better note this year as a retiring football coach and activities director. So congratulations to every one of you. You are welcome to stay for the meeting this evening, but if you want to go like do last minute studying for tomorrow, you can go now if you want, okay?
All right. Now on to consent items, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Public comment?
There is none tonight.
Okay. Onto informational items, transportation program review, Dr. Pettingill. Thanks for being here tonight when you're under the weather.
That's okay, thank you. Okay, as many of you look forward to the transportation program review each year, wanted to get through this a little bit. Our mission and purpose, and I don't really like to just read slides, but I think it is important as it outlines what we strive to do each day in transportation area. And that we do believe it's an essential part of the school's program. And our mission is to provide a safe, dependable, efficient transportation for the, for all of our students. Excuse me. Obviously, the goal is, we have, our goals are focused on four areas. Safe and positive experience, cost efficiency, excellent customer service and quality staff. I put this in here just so you understand a few things. Apple Bus Company is one of the 10 largest bus companies in the nation. We are fortunate, and one of the reasons we get a good pricing system from them is we were one of their first larger districts when they started with us years ago. But Mike Oyster, as a resident in the area, their home office is in Cleveland, Missouri, which is, is next door to us. So as you kind of look through this organizational chart, when you get down here to location managers, that's Tim Dennis that I work with closely in our terminal. But a nice thing about working with Apple is everyone on this chart will answer my phone calls. So that's always a benefit. Just at the Raypack terminal, just to give you a little insight on what it kind of looks like here. We have 136 individuals that work through Apple Bus for Raypack each day. A little bit of the scope of what it looks like in our district. I know what it seems like when we have a complaint. We do take every complaint very seriously, but just at the big picture, and we have 119 daily routes that go out each, you know, AM and PM, plus our Success Academy routes. And we have 13 shuttles. That doesn't include any of our practice shuttles. As you know, we have some of our athletes that practice offsite. So those require shuttles. Along with, there's no way I can, well, there is a way, but not an easy way to quantify exactly how many field trips for Panther Pride or for our elementary students or our choir band and sports. All of those are also, we utilize Apple Bus. It's well over a million miles that Raypack students are transported through Apple Bus each year. You hear a lot about being over capacity. Well, the, the state allows three per seat, and then two in the small seat in the back. We strive to keep that at two per seat, especially in our 612 level, asking three high schoolers or three, even, even our three middle schoolers is almost, I mean, that's not really fair to ask them to sit three to a seat. They're just big kids. So we do track that daily, every route. And then I, when I have a Friday morning meeting with, with Tim and Tony, the assistant manager, each week, that's one of our agenda, standing agenda items as we go through the load counts to determine if we need to add any additional routes or not.
How's our number of monitors doing?
We have 23 regular monitors, not counting our, you know, we also have 16 special education route monitors and that serve more as a para on the buses. In terms of regular route monitors, we're okay with our numbers. That number increased greatly when we went to the 612 buses at our South Middle School. Because we felt the need to, to make sure we were supporting, I mean, somebody had a sixth grade daughter last year and a seventh grade daughter this year that rides a 612 bus. We started out with a monitor on all of those, which is why we expanded to 23 monitors. Since then, we've kind of redistributed them a little bit, once we've determined the culture of the buses and some need it worse than others. This is just a quick snapshot of our staff survey. When I reach out to our staff, we send them, in the past, it may be a little bit more direct now, but in the past, we sent out that Monster survey in the spring. And we had seven questions about transportation on that survey for our staff. And I do like to ask our staff because they see it from a little bit different perspective in terms of interactions with the drivers during unloading and loading, and they rotate through their supervision. So I do ask them. The arrows are a little confusing in that, that is the current year number of agrees and disagrees, or As and Bs, versus the average of the previous years in the survey. So, and then how does that compare? So we had a 6% increase in the professional parents of bus drivers. And that was a goal from the previous year. And then we had a small dip in professional behavior ranked by our staff and a huge increase in customer service. So that was a good sign. Quality of work, timeliness and efficiency. Quality of work went up significantly, and then the other three all went down slightly in terms of timeliness. Communication's always an area of concern that we are, continue to work on, and then the overall rating. The 2018 goals, it's been two years since we gave this review. I said every year, it's, it's actually every other year that we do this program review. We had set goals and established that the staff's, on the staff perception survey, the increased percentage of the responses of fours and fives would increase by 10 percentage points. We had a great gain in spring, that following spring. And then last spring, it was, it dropped down to 57.3, so that goal was not met. The patron survey, we actually, that goal is a little bit outdated now because we switched complete surveys. Now I'm sending it to every patron in the district. I send the survey specifically to all the parents that, what actually comes down. If they marked yes, they would like to receive transportation services back at registration, they're on that email list. So that gives me a more direct response directly from the patrons that are utilizing the transportation service. So I'll discuss that a little bit later. Obviously, we want our inspections to be a high pass rate. We'd set the goal at no less than 95% on the first inspection. And it was 18, 19 inspection was 97.4 and 100% on the second attempt. And when I, when I say it didn't pass the first time, that's usually, it can't be more than 25% of the LED lights on the taillight, or a muffler can't be loose. It's, it's not dangerous situations. Our average cost per mile is something that we strive to keep down. And our average, the average per mile cost for Raypack is 72% of the state average. And I'll talk about that more in the scorecard. So when you're looking at a scorecard for transportation, the staff survey percentage rating, we discussed that earlier, it did fall, so that's only in the 50s now. And we would, it's obviously an area we need to get back up. The patron survey, as I discussed, we have a brand new survey. We would like, and there was 58.3 that said they were, expectations were met or exceeded in the areas, in the overall quality. The cost efficiency factors, kind of a convoluted number that we, that Desi kicks back to us. It's actually a number we want to be closer to 100% to get full funding there. That's actually a little counterintuitive, as we moved away from our intermediate schools, that meant K4, well, and fifth graders were closer to their school than they were before. So they're not traveling as far, but we still pay the same per bus. So it actually makes it look like a little less efficient, even though, but we've shortened our ride times. And I'm okay with those numbers. As I mentioned earlier, our cost per mile, the state average is $4.02 a mile. In 1718, when we did all of the reconfiguration, that came down to, that was, it went from 314 down to 273. And that insted up a little bit the next year. And that's probably going to be affected again now that we erased the one-mile boundary. So we'll talk about that next time. And then we were at 97% first, first attempt this past year. The areas that are standing, are they, are, they top our agenda each of my Friday morning meetings that we discuss and tie our agenda to for my meetings with Apple Bus. And then they turn around and use in their safety meetings, is the customer service, the quality of work, the efficiency, effective communication, and then professionalism and courtesy. A few of our strategies to increase and consistent, reliable, on-time service. We had a Zonar last year, that way I, in case he gets a lot of audits, I'll, I'll send her an email and say, please audit bus 17 for the last two weeks at this stop, when I have a parent call and say, my bus is never on time. Now I can pull it up and go back as far as I want to and find out exactly what minute they came there and for how long they were there at all of the stops on all of our buses. So that's, that's been a great addition. We were actually piloting, I piloted a Safe Stop app last year on one of our buses, but I wasn't very happy with it because the idea was for it to be like an Uber app, where you could, a parent could log in and see where their bus is. But it would have like a two or three minute delay. And at that point, that's, that's not good enough. That's going to cause more, that's going to cause more issues than it helps because you're going to be seeing the bus that your child's got five more minutes, and then it's going to jump and be at your front door. So we are re-piloting it right now, getting ready to release that to some parents to help us with the pilot on two buses, two of our country routes. So that'll be coming out soon, so that should help there. As I mentioned before, our positive ride experience, a lot of that comes into not being overcrowded. Nobody's going to have a positive experience if you're sitting three to a seat on a hot day. For communication, we've opened up School Messenger just this fall for Apple Bus to utilize our School Messenger app. And a lot of times, especially if it's a, a bus gets stuck at 4:15, there may not be, a principal may be otherwise, you know, in an IEP meeting or a 504 meeting and not be able to get that, we're going to, we took away a step so that they can send direct communication from their company. The updated goals that I've set for the upcoming year to two years is the number of parents indicating communication expectations have met, been met or exceeded will go from 47.4 to 60. That seems a little steep, however, that's two years to get there. So I felt that was fair. And 60% is not, I don't feel too lofty of a goal, we should be there, should be there next year. The number of parents indicating overall expectations of the program in general, I would like to see go from 58.3 to 70. Obviously, would like to see it go much higher than that, but just making some realistic goals. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
What did you say the name of the app was that you were looking at?
It's called Safe Stop. Because we have Zonar, it worked, it's one of the apps that work with Zonar.
Does Here Come the Bus, Here Comes the Bus work with that? Because that's, I think, what we use in retail, so it would just carry.
Right, and that's more of a, I believe, your Durham. I think that's more of a Durham app. But I've, I've heard of it and I'll look into it some more, too. No.
Parents are seeing that, is that staff?
Well, that's probably the, it's a combination, that's parents. Well, I've asked the staff, they're going to have a different relationship with the drivers and the bus company than the parents. The parents are probably reporting out their own experience along with what they hear their students, or what their children tell them.
And communication, what, have they said specifically what they, what parents?
Well, I just asked, does it meet their expectations? I think that the main piece of communication they want to know is if their bus is running behind. They want to know that, where their children are. And they don't want to find out from the news or from social media that a bus was in a fender bender or, or stuck in a ditch, when they want to hear about it from us or through Apple Bus or Raypack.
Which is sometimes a challenge because we're responding to whatever the situation is. And you, you get, you know, communicate as fast as you can, but you have to deal with the situation first sometimes.
That expectation may not be a realistic expectation. I mean, it's.
It's fair.
It's a fair, for me to hear that from the school, but I don't know how realistic that is.
Sure.
You have a student on the bus with a cellphone.
We just do the best we can.
Yeah, right.
So the main, main complaint is communication?
I think that's true in just about every field. I mean, people can put up with a lot if they know what's going on and they're communicated with. Just being kept in the dark is a frustration in, in any field.
You might touch on the fact that with the one-mile wave or how that's impacted the total number of routes, you might mention that to them.
Well, we had estimated that we would add, that we wouldn't have to add more first-tier routes to it, obviously, because that's a 612. And we were, we had like 10 routes to, we had 10 routes that were tier one only. And so we felt we could absorb the, the additional elementary routes within that because of the pricing structure was going to make it affordable when the board allowed us to eliminate the one-mile walk boundary. And then turns out, we only had to add two. So it's very affordable.
Were the parents happy? Did you get any feedback from that?
I didn't get any negative feedback.
Got a couple of nice emails from folks that were very appreciative.
I got some other boards that said, thanks for making us look bad.
I did get some negative feedback from some neighboring districts.
Well, I think we were all very glad that we could do that for our patrons.
Me too.
Well, thank you for that, that is a thankless job someday, so thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
All right, on to action items, district roofing bid. Dr. Dobson, Mr. Dobson.
Not doctor. Good evening, thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. Talk a little bit about roofing, our super fun capital projects of fiscal year '21 coming up. I think it's important to show that normally at our January, February board in years past, as usual, when we're bringing the capital projects to the board to ask for permission to look at bidding those projects and whatnot. It was important this year that we brought those in November. I believe we're going to see over the course of the next couple of months, that's going to hopefully lower some of our overall costs of some of our capital projects is our, is our main goal. So again, this evening is for Peculiar Elementary and the high school. With the assistance of Trimco, we enlisted to do three rough sections, two at Peculiar, rough section two, rough section 12, and then rough section 14 at the high school. To bring those into context, rough section two is the fourth grade wing at Peculiar Elementary. Rough section 12 is a café wing. And then again, at the high school, that is what we would call the patio commons. Now that 99 addition, it would be that café at the high school. It would be the roughs that'll be, be in address. Kerberg was the lowest and most responsible bidder at $213,700. I think it's going to be important that we ask for a recommendation to approve Kerberg Company at $213,700 with a 5% contingency for any unforeseen circumstances on that. Below is the bid tab showing all of our bidders on that. We did have six bidders this year. So it was very good to see the level of interest we brought this year as well. To follow that, we'll be utilizing the AEP-A co-op through Trimco for purchasing the materials direct instead of through the contractor. For a cost savings there, that total bid amount was $95,843.27. And we are not asking for a contingency on that since the rough sections are predetermined. The material should not change on those. I can answer any questions?
Does this finish all of Peculiar Rough now?
This does, yes. This will finish Peculiar, that will bring Peculiar to the oldest rough sections of 2006. Will be on Peculiar. And we did a large, very, two very large, the largest roughs actually at Peculiar were done in '06. So this will hopefully not have to be down there for a couple of years. And then start us at the high school for future years.
All right, is there a motion?
Approve that we approve the bid from the Kerberg Country for the amount of 213,700 plus 5% contingency for any unforeseen construction. And also the bid from Trimco, the amount of $95,843.27 for roofing materials.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Dobson. All right, on to 2020-21 staffing request, Dr. Hatfield.
Thank you. At the work session on January 9th, we discussed several things, but one of which was a potential machining program that we are looking to add to our high school curriculum along with several other PLTW offerings and increased enrollment. That's all going to mean, we need an additional FTE to facilitate. Industrial tech teachers are pretty hard to come by. So we wanted to get ahead of this by asking you for your approval to add this FTE so that we can begin the recruiting and hiring process. We are estimating the amount, and obviously with teachers, it varies based upon the previous experience. But we are estimating the cost of this FTE at $63,600, which includes their salary, benefits and retirement contributions that the district makes. May I ask, sir, any questions for you?
Is there a motion?
Move to approve the staff request as presented.
Is there a second? Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you. On to 2020, that sounds so funny to say, 2020-21 school calendar, Dr. Volker.
Yeah, it is interesting to say that now you start to add those years on. Makes us all feel just a little bit older, isn't that nice? Well, good evening. I'd just like to go over kind of our structure first and how we do this process. Pretty consistent process, we've been doing this for a while now. Members of Team Raypack and the Professional Development Committee formed a subgroup. Task was seeking input and ultimately drafting a school calendar for your approval. The subgroup began with a calendar development process by surveying parents, asking for their input on calendar topics. We had over 700 parents complete the survey. It was great information, just ranking their preferences and likes and dislikes regarding the calendar structure. The subgroup then asked for feedback from district staff, the Professional Development Committee specifically, and also Team Raypack. Finally, we then go to a two-draft calendars, where shared with our entire staff, leading to a final recommendation of the proposed calendar by Team Raypack. Just this Tuesday, Team Raypack selected the calendar you see tonight before you for final approval. Some of the bigger ideas on this, I will be perfectly frank and honest, it was a much more difficult process this year. Really was. There were a lot more conversations that had to do with the Missouri law changing. And it no longer allows school districts to begin more than, no more than 14 days before the first Monday in September. Well, as soon as you do that, that's significantly later than what we're used to starting. It compresses everything and requires you to make some different decisions that honestly, we as the calendar committee found difficult. And, but we did the best we could. We sought all the input and made the process as, as meaningful and as high-quality a calendar we could for our students, our parents and our staff. So the, the, one of the biggest challenges was really trying to balance the semesters. The letting you start, there is absolutely some merit in trying to end that semester, first semester before winter break, so you don't bring students back and then have a final schedule in January and begin to assess in January after you've had that time off. So that was kind of a goal and what we worked towards in that, that was very difficult when you start on the 24th of August. So that attempting to balance led to that Monday start date that you do see of the 24th and a shortening of winter break. In the past, we'd like to start midweek. You notice we'd started Wednesday most often. We weren't able to do that, we needed those first semester days. And then we love to end on a Friday and have those two full weeks. That was very difficult to do when you're trying to get even close to an even number of days in first semester and second semester. And still, even with that and adding half-days instead of full-days professional development, you, we couldn't do it. You still get to 83 and you're 89, it's just not possible. It's very, very difficult if you're trying to end the semester. So the committee struggled with that a lot, and we did the best we could. Some things that we kept, that we found to be popular, that splitting parent-teacher conferences. And we did the high school earlier, and then the middle school and the elementary just a little bit later so they could have a little more time, a little more information. We'd like to continue that as a structured process. We did continue, our staff is very, and our parents even said as well, the week-long spring break. I mean, that was a way we could have found days in that, but we chose to keep, keep that at a full week. We continued our, our snow makeup day structure, but you'll see, we only have two built-in snow makeup days in this calendar. And then the ultimate goal, the number one priority is to end before Memorial Day. There was no one, and that's very much our parents and our staff's, everybody's first priority, no one wants to come back after Memorial Day, which I completely understand. It becomes much more difficult in there to gain students and keep their attention after Memorial Day. So I do think, just talking in general about the calendar process, that in the future, unless the law changes, I really do believe we're going to need to explore some alternate methods to provide instruction, possibly during snow events, and definite alternate methods to provide staff professional development. And so we can build some of those things back into our calendar that our staff and our students and our families really see as priorities while maintaining the highest level of education and support we can for our kids within that calendar structure. So I think as we move forward in the future, unless the law does change regarding that, hopefully maybe it will, we might have to look at some alternate ways to do things.
For those who may be watching, I think we've all had comments from parents and people about why do we have so many professional development days? Can you explain what those are?
Yeah, we, actually, when you look at it, when you take away the in-service that we start at the beginning of the Yeah, we, actually, when you look at it, when you take away the in-service that we start the beginning of the year, we're looking at two and a half, three days. I think it's three true days of professional development throughout the year. We do a lot of our review, reflection, refinement, our staff get together and do curricular review. We'll do, we like to have one in August, so we can take the, the NWE data and our early data in the fall and really take a deep dive with it and look where our students are going, where they are and where we need to take them. Do a lot of deep curricular review, and without those professional development days, honestly, staff just doesn't have time to do that. At the high school level, at our secondary level, we do have a little more with our late start Thursdays, they're able to collaborate in the departments. We don't have those days across the district, we definitely don't have them K-eight, so we have to use those other times. That might be something that we talk about in the future, looking at maybe a six twelve late start model or something along those lines. But a lot of that professional development is for review of data, setting goals, learning new processes. We talk all the time about, well, when you get a new math curriculum or when you get, it takes time to, to refine it and do those in a high quality way. So that's what we use those professional development days for.
Well, I will say there's already been a couple of legislative pieces filed this year, I don't know if they'll go anywhere, but to go back to the old way of start date and let everybody have a hearing. So we'll see if that changes.
I would appreciate that. That would be very nice.
And being on Team Raypack, there was a lot of discussion.
Oh, yeah.
Even at the Team Raypack level on the calendar this year, and there just wasn't a good fit for everybody with the way we had to do it this year.
I would agree with that as well.
I noticed there's only like a half day of PD first semester.
Yep.
How are teachers feeling about only having a half a day?
Well, it depends, honestly, just being frank, it depends who you talk to. I mean, there are some that say, well, I can get what my responsibilities are done with that amount of time, and I think there are plenty that would say that's not near enough time to be reflective. But when you're trying to add days into first semester to try and balance it, but after being forced to start the twenty-fourth and trying to end before winter break, you really don't, you're not able to put those days in.
And it's not reflected on the student calendar here, but we did have one additional pre-service day before school started.
Yeah.
There, there's an extra day.
So that goes from five to six.
We can do as many of those days in the front end as we want, we just can't start with students until the twenty-fourth.
Your staff not necessarily, six is might be our max, you know, staff doesn't want to come in eight, ten days before students arrive to do, that wouldn't be productive either, so.
You know, from a student perspective, with this change, it seems like the students that might be most impacted would be the youngest, you know, the kindergarten. When we would start on a Wednesday, it's a lot easier to kind of ease your kindergartner into it than just starting right off the bat with that full five day week. So I don't know if there's something we can do to help the kindergartners that.
Yeah, I think our kindergarten preview day was fairly effective. I think I did get a, a lot of good feedback. We're going to remember that last year was the first time we had tried that. So we are looking at trying that again, we haven't set that date yet, but I have a couple in mind, but I think that will be really important as well. Although, no matter what we try, I agree with you, I think that is going to be more difficult for our youngest students.
Are we allowed to do preview day before that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not a part of our instructional calendar.
I always needed the time to get my teacher voice back because by three, three days in.
It's true, that's a good point, actually.
Talking that much all summer, so.
Seventy percent of our staff will be hoarse by Thursday, that's probably a very true statement. So there are a couple of calendar decisions that frankly, we, we would have liked not to have had to make.
Well, it looks like you did a good job.
Well, thank you.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school calendar is presented.
Is there a second? Any other discussion or questions? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Please thank that committee for us.
I will.
For our hard work.
I will.
A lot of extra work.
It was, yes, it was a little more stressful this year, I promise you that, thank you very much.
Okay, on to committee reports.
You can see we all have little watered bottles from the wellness committee, and they're doing the hydration challenge, and then also the maintain not gain is still in, in the works and want everybody to kind of, you know, watch their weight and watch what they eat, be healthy.
Well, as I said, Team Raypack worked on the calendar when they met and talked about it and voted to send the one to the board. They started looking at priorities for the budget for next year, they don't have any numbers to go with yet, but at least starting to think about what are those priorities they want to look at. Mrs. Bias gave them a, a kind of a preliminary budget outlook of what there might be. And then Dr. Hatfield talked to them about the new survey that we approved a couple of months ago, the Satchel Plus Pulse. And that they would start rolling that out with the teachers fairly soon. And then the innovation committee was canceled this last month, and I had a board of directors meeting in Columbia this last weekend, worked on updating the proposed, the purpose statement for MSBA, and that will be voted on in the June delegate assembly. Worked on fall conference, some of the changes that may be coming now that it's in Kansas City, and they have a whole lot more space and options for conference. And then legislative day is coming up February tenth. And then I was on a webinar yesterday about legislative update. And that's always fun. All right, any?
So several committees didn't have meetings in the past month, but we do have some mental health committee meetings coming up, that just popped up on the calendar. By the next month.
And the Safe Schools was canceled because of weather, so.
I think there was a few of those.
Yeah, a little bit of.
All right, if there's no more, on to superintendent's report.
Just a few reminders for everybody this evening, it's that time of year, we're asking for folks to nominate candidates for Teacher of the Year and Support Staff Employee of the Year. You have till February third, and it's a great way to honor the great work of our staff, so I encourage all of our community members and, and parents in particular to think about those, those staff members who make a difference for their kids and nominate them. We always have a great list, lots of great employees to pick from, so it's a good way to recognize our staff members. The high school course planning night is Tuesday evening, so lots of information there to be presented, and we're going to be sharing it, or at least planning to share at this point at the next work session, more information for the board about what's all in that high school course planning guide, because there's just so many opportunities for kids, it's kind of hard to work through sometimes. So we'll spend some time looking at that next month. The polar plunge is Saturday, so it's going to be a little chilly, but I told somebody that after all these early mornings this week of the weather and what have you, that I was looking forward to sleeping in Saturday, and then I had to remind myself, no, I'm not sleeping in Saturday. So anyhow, if you've, if you can't be there, please support somebody who's participating. And then I also want to recognize this, the, the board as a group, before our next regular meeting is School Board Recognition Week, the week of February ninth through the fifteenth. And we'll celebrate it at the next meeting, but I also wanted to put it out there since it's before, before that next meeting, that it's actually being celebrated. And if it weren't for the volunteers that put their name out there and run for the board, we wouldn't be able to have the kind of school district that we do. So I appreciate the, the group here that have, have done that and we'll recognize you next month, so that's all I have.
On to Board of Education comments. Well, I would say I've got to go with Dr. Volker and Dr. Monses and with Dr. Schlegel, our incoming superintendent, on tours of a couple of the buildings in the last couple of weeks, and that's been nice to see him getting into the buildings and interact with our teachers and staff, and they're all excited. I think his nickname one day was Dr. Bagel, they misinterpreted Dr. Schlegel, he was Dr. Bagel that day. So it's been nice to get into the buildings and see all that stuff happening every day.
The Foundation, as you all know, does a lot of work for our school district, and the annual gala is coming up in February on the twenty-third. And it is a tropical theme this year, an evening in paradise, so it'll be casual and tropical themed, so it should be a lot of fun. Encourage everyone that would like to come to come.
February twenty-second.
Oh, twenty-second, I'm sorry, thank you.
All right, moving on to calendar of events, February tenth is the MSBA legislative forum in Jeff City. February thirteenth is our next work session at six PM. February twenty-second is the Foundation Gala at five thirty at Centerview. And February twenty-seventh is our next regular board meeting, six PM closed and seven PM open. And we are adjourned.